Okay, we call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Campion.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lozado.
Here.
Mayor Lamson.
Here. Stand for the silent prayer and the flag salute.
Are there any veterans in the audience? Chris, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. All right, can we replay the...
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on the Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 11th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Donna. Are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? All right. Moving on, we have a presentation, the State of the City Address. Amy Mendez.
So we had the State of the City Address that we are invited to do every year by the Galt Chamber of Commerce, and usually we have guest speakers or it's been put on by the city manager. And this year, we didn't have an acting city manager at the moment, so the department heads came together and came to the event and helped put on the State of the City Address, and I think it was very successful. It was very well received, and I kind of like that format, so I'm hoping that we're thinking about that for next year. And we call Claire Tyson, the Finance Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lamson and council members. I'm going to start this out, let's see if I can do this right, with a brief conversation about the Long Range Financial Plan. So for quite a number of years since the Great Recession, the city of Galt has been dealing with increasing costs and reduced revenue and has been weathering that storm through the reserves. Through that effort, it's become apparent that we need to do some kind of a forecast planning, so we've developed a tool, Long Range Financial Plan. This tool should aid in decision-making in the future by showing the financial impact of decisions that are made. It's an Excel model, so it gives us a great deal of flexibility, and we can change it as council makes decisions. Estimates of revenues and expenditures for the general fund, which holds the expenses and revenues for the main services provided to the citizens. It also embeds contributions of any fund that needs general fund support. This model is, uses historical trends, adds known budget revisions to those trends, and then adds projections forward, so it's a four-years beyond the current budget model. So it, this plan focuses on the general fund because that's the revenues and expenses that support most of the services to citizens. In the model, it shows that we have Parks and Recreation Fund and Northeast Area Lighting and Landscape District, and the reason for that is that they, the general fund provides support for those funds. This model can change depending on what fund needs that support, but right now, those are the three. So this chart, I hope you can read it. What this shows is each one of the funds and how they did in the three years of actual that we have in the historical trend, plus the two-years budget, plus four-years projection. So the orange line is the general fund, which holds most costs and revenues. The blue line is the Northeast Lighting and Landscape District, with the red line being Parks and Rec. The dotted line is the combination of all of those. So the three years of actual, those contributions to whichever fund needed the support have already been done, and that's why the line's fairly flat. And then the rest of the years on this projection don't show that contribution correction, but again, they're combined into the dotted line. So based on that, we know we have some corrections to be made. This is another picture of really the same thing, but what this shows is those three years' worth of actual. The green bar, the green portion of that bar is the Economic Uncertainty Reserve, which is a policy that the council approved for a 25% of expenditure to be held in an economic uncertainty reserve. The blue is other reserves, those have to do with pre-pays and some requirements that we have to set aside. And then the yellow is available fund balance. So as you can see, from, the city endured about three, four years' worth of budget cuts, which means the reserve has gone up. However, those budget cuts, even though they continue throughout the model, we're not assuming additional budget cuts at this point until decisions are made. So what this shows is that in, let's see, in 2020, we start eating away at the Economic Uncertainty Reserve if nothing else is done, and by 2024, we'll be in the red. So what this shows us is that there's some hard work that needs to be done. Council's committed to working with us to try and come up with solutions. Staff will be bringing forward whatever financial improvements we can for consideration at And that's really all I have for this one. More to follow. So I'm going to pass this off to Mike, just going to talk a little about Public Works.
Thanks, Claire. Thank you, council. Appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, it was a really great opportunity to meet some folks in the community and kind of talk a little bit about specifically Public Works and kind of what we've been up to. So I'd kind of like to start off with a couple of projects that we've recently completed. And initially here, the first one is the Fourth Street Parking Lot and Open Space Improvements. And I've got to take off my glasses, make sure I don't miss something. But basically, this was completed at the end of last year, and it included street improvements, landscaping, as well as decorative lighting, and the new promenade area. Collectively, the improvements made will help provide a first-class venue for the city and has certainly elevated, I think, its small-town charm. So next, I'd like to talk about the South Galt Safe Routes to School Project. This was constructed roughly about $5.6 million, and that we got the Safe Routes to School grant, and it was also completed late last year. The project provided enhanced safety features along several roadways in the city and primarily focused on three school sites, the Galt and Valley Oaks Elementary School, and then Galt High School as well. The, the project included pedestrian facilities such as Americans with Disabilities Act compliant curb ramps, at the crossing locations, pedestrian push-button activated flashing beacons at the major crosswalks, pavement markings, signings, striping, as well as some pavement Turning now to some upcoming projects, recently, the city secured about $2.5 million from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments to construct what we call a Complete Streets Enhancement Project on C Street. And that Complete Streets essentially means that it covers all modes, whether it's bike, ped, transit, or vehicular. The project limits, as you can hopefully see on the map there, are from Sixth Street on the west end to Civic Drive on the east end. We'll plan to start preliminary engineering and environmental work probably later this year, and we will include a significant public outreach effort. Obviously, it's a major corridor, and we want to work with everyone to help identify what types of enhancements this project actually ends up including, as well as trying to identify and minimize the impacts of property frontages. The next upcoming major effort that we've got on our plate is a Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility. And the city was fortunate to receive just under $5 million, kind of a collective between some money, about 3.3 million from Sacramento Area Council of Governments, around 900-plus-thousand from Sacramento County itself, and then the remainder was from the Sacramento Transportation Authority. So essentially, what this will do per recent council accident in March is we've identified to locate the facility out at the city's wastewater treatment plant site, which if you look on that map, it's kind of that black outlined area there, kind of in the lower-right corner of our property. And, and then, you know, we've, we've solicited the school districts to see if they would be interested to participate with us for their school buses. And, and, and so we've had some ongoing discussions with them. In fact, just last night, I was at the Cities and Schools Meeting, Cast Meeting, they call it, and kind of gave them an update on where we are. And, and where we are, just to kind of get everyone to hear one as well, is the Sacramento Area Council of Governments has kind of said, "Look, it's, it's been some time since we've allocated that funding. We really need to, to move forward on this project." And so they've given us a deadline that we have to have the facility complete by the fall of 2022. So when we back in the schedule for that, we've got to start our preliminary engineering and environmental work probably later this summer, in the next probably three or four months or so. So, and then moving forward from there, you know, we'd probably look to start final design about March of next year, and then construction probably in May of '21 in order to hit that fall 2022 deadline. So, so that's where we are in the schedule, and so that's, that's an exciting project that we're working on, too. And then kind of the last thing, and Claire touched on it a little bit, with one of the lighting and landscape districts, is, and you saw the trend line there, at least for the northeast one, it's, it's trending a little bit negative, so this is something else that we're going to be working on. And, and as you can see on the map there to the right, I don't know if everyone's familiar or not, but you can see the three districts there. And essentially, the west side district is shown in pink, the northeast is in yellow, and then lighting district number three is in the blue. So in the coming months, we'll be working with council to kind of explore some options to ensure the long-range fiscal sustainability of these districts. It's going to include extensive outreach as well, and within the districts as well as the greater city community. And so that's kind of where we are on that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Stockman. Thank you. Okay. Sneaking up.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and members of the audience. I'm pleased to be up here and talk about some of the things that are going on in the Police Department. What's interesting is that the Police Department has many different facets and things that we do. We do a lot of interesting things, and, you know, the, the world of policing is, is expanding, and it's not just going out on patrol, it's, there's a lot more to it than that. And so we're going to just highlight a few things. First, I thought it was really, really important to start off with the Kevin Tom Memorial. Last year was the five-year anniversary of his murder, so since then, now it's been six years, and so we do a lot to make sure that we remember him and the sacrifice that he made, not only for the citizens of Galt, but for the law enforcement community. So we have our fallen officer memorial right here at City Hall. We have our annual remembrance that we do every January 15th. There's a new cross at his site of his murder that has been erected and a whole lot of improvements, thanks to Public Works and some of the efforts of our police officers that took the initiative to make that site even better than it was. We have our annual 5K run. If you all can see, I have this pin that I wear on my uniform. It's been issued to every member of our department to make sure that we don't forget. There's a new cabinet in the lobby that remembers our fallen. And the Special Olympics Torch Run, that most people don't know, but Kevin is buried in, his gravesite is in Citrus Heights off of Greenback, and there is a flame that is always burning there, it's the eternal flame, and that's where that torch, for the Special Olympics Torch Run, is lit. The person that sits in my position, the chief, actually gets to light that torch. That flame is kept lit. It goes back all the way down to the Galt through Elk Grove, up to Sacramento, and it's ran to the state capitol, where the ceremony for the Special Olympics in Northern California and for the state of California is held. And then from there, that flame that is lit overseeing Kevin's gravesite is ran to, has ran to UC Davis, where the games are held, and that's where the big torch is lit. And that's all in remembrance of Kevin. Next, I'm going to talk about our CAPS program. They were Business of the Month from, we're really honored to have that. Our CAPS are amazing people, that they volunteer their time for the betterment of our city and for the members of our community. They do so much. There's usually about 15 of them that are at our Police Department at any given time, and they self-sustained go out and, and help with our patrol, a lot of clerical work, traffic control. They manage our work crew amongst other things, and run a lot of errands and stuff that, if we weren't doing that, a paid member would have to do that. They're all part of our family. We really appreciate their efforts. Next thing is community relations. We, I can say that Galt has always had an amazing community relations program. In the last few years, we've been working really hard to enhance that. We do a lot of community meetings, events, outreach, one of which is the annual volleyball tournament with the Fire Department. And then we also do, we're present at all of the special events and community meetings and coffee with the cop. We also do some unique things where we outreach to different segments of our community, regardless how big or small they are, trying to identify and work with specific issues in specific neighborhoods and with the specific groups. And then lastly, our social media outreach has been enhanced tenfold, a thousandfold probably more, is more accurate in the last few years, and that's from the efforts of all of our staff that have been working really hard to make sure the community is informed, and we let them know what is and isn't going on within our community, so. Next thing is leadership development. The big emphasis since, in the last few years, has really been pushing leadership development, succession planning, and to make sure that we are the best-trained police force in the region. So a few things that, a few highlights that we've done in the last 12 months alone is we have had members of our team graduate from Command College, Leadership Ethics Training, Post-Management, Lieutenant Promotional Workshops, Critical Incident Responses for Supervisors, Tactical Leadership, Field Training Officer Coordinator, Post-Supervisor School, Assertive Supervision, Fundamental Supervision, Volunteer Staff Coordinator, and the last one you can see on the slide is the Women Leaders in Law Enforcement. That is a very, very hard course to get into. It's the biggest one in demand in the state of California, and every year, I'm committed to sending at least two of our staff to that every single year. All right, next, we're going to, I'm going to skip around on this slide, I'm not going to go in order. The newest thing that we've done in our dispatch center is our text to 911. That enables any citizen with their cell phones to dial 911 on their phone and text in whatever their emergency is. That helps with the hearing impaired. It also helps with situations where perhaps the person that is in crises can't actually get to a phone and make a phone call. You know, today's incident in Colorado with the school shooting is a great example of that. It's a horrible tragedy, but if I, if the, the students were in a classroom and they're unable to make a phone call because they don't want to make any noise, they can text a 911 call into dispatch. The other thing we've done in the last 18 months is we've purchased new dispatch consoles and radios for all of our, for our dispatchers and for our officers. That enables us better interoperability. After Hurricane Katrina, that was the biggest issue. That had, came out of that is the inability to communicate with other agencies through this. This gives us that ability to do that. The next thing is recruitment. We have increased our recruitment efforts, again, tenfold in the last few years. I'm proud to say that we have one vacancy, soon to be two due to our retirement, but we are doing better than most agencies in the region as far as our recruitment efforts. That's because we're working closely with HR, we have a new screening process, and we're only hiring the quality, good-quality people with great character. That's been one of the initiatives over the last couple of years. And we also are really focused on hiring people that want to work in this community with our small-town charm. That is one of our biggest emphasis. And then the other thing that has happened, and I think that's really helped enhance our recruitment efforts, is because we spend a lot of time listening not only to the people within our department about what is important to them, but also with the community members providing us that input, too. And so we're really screening out and trying to make sure that we only hire those folks that will be happy to work here in Galt. Homeless outreach, we've spent in the last 18 months working with different community groups and to try to figure out better ways to service our homeless population and to help provide the services that they need. Our officers are better equipped to inform the homeless population about what services are out there. And then we've been spending a lot of time meeting with our care home providers that encompass our, or surround our city about, about some of their clientele, because a lot of the complaints about homeless are actually clientele that live in those care home facilities. And then lastly, talk about our RIMS failure. On August 7th of 18, I got the worst news I could possibly get as far as not a critical incident in the field, but just a critical incident is the fact that we lost 18 months of data. That's all of our RIMS and CAD data, and unfortunately, that data is not going to be able to be recovered, so that is lost data. But we've worked through that, through the District Attorney's Office and through all the, with all of our reports and everything else, established procedures with inside the Police Department. And so I think that we've recovered nicely, it's just an unfortunate situation that has occurred. And then we're absolutely, city, as a city, we are working really hard to identify the issues, identify what did and didn't happen, and then ensure that we have the fail safes in place to make sure that it never happens again. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Arias. Do you want me to advance it for you?
Please.
I learned how to do that just now.
Thank you. No, thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Chris Arias, Community Development Director, and it is my pleasure to talk about the accomplishments or the activities of the Community Development Department in 2018. And I think the, the two biggest accomplishments really are shown on the screen, the first one being the annexation of 230 acres, which serves as the expansion of the industrial park. And that's significant because obviously, the city boundaries are growing, or have grown, 230 acres, but this, the expansion of the industrial park will help us balance the residential growth with job-producing uses. So this was really an important accomplishment this past year in 2018. We're not out of the woods for attracting future development into that site, especially the job producers. There are some challenges, and the challenge we'll be working on going forward is really providing the infrastructure to actually attract those job producers and get them up and running. The next item on that list is the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. This was a long-term effort between Sacramento County and the city of Rancho Cordova and the city of Galt. There's a couple other users in there, too, and this has gone on for, Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, 15 years, maybe 15-plus years. So this is a major accomplishment to actually have this completed. The, the Habitat Conservation Plan will help streamline development, but will also help protect the environment by providing a cohesive network of preserves, which is better for the biol, nearby biology resources. A couple other successes in 2018 were the city actually approving a couple different housing product types. The city mostly is low-density residential. All the new growth that we've had the past few years has been low-density, and that's your 6,500-square-foot lots or greater. These developments that you see on the screen are all small-lot subdivisions and offer a different product to the city. So the first one, Veranda River Oaks, that's an Elliott product, that's at the northeast corner of Walnut and Carillion, right north of Community Park. And then the Greenwood Estates Project, that's south of Rite Aid. So both those projects are unique in that they'll offer a different variety for the city. And then Gerbit's Townhomes is small, but it's mighty. It's only six units, but it is a great infill project. It's at 7th and B Street, and it's a nice six-unit townhome project. So we're excited for all of them, me in particular, more for the infill and the six-unit townhome project, even though it is small. So on the planning end, we've been very busy. In addition to those projects that I mentioned, we have other housing projects that are in various stages of development, which I'll talk about on the next screen, but building has been relatively slow. So you can see by this graph that in 2018, we only had 38 home permits issued, and that is our lowest total since 2012. So not the busiest year, and certainly not runaway growth. You can see how we've kind of tapered off since our high in 2016. We have, which again, I'll mention on the next screen, close to 2,300 housing units and approved tentative map, but they don't all build at once, they kind of stage in, and I would expect to see a little bit better increase in building activity in 2019, but not significantly so and not more than 2016. So the building permits will trickle, trickle in over time. So as mentioned, we have about 2,300 units and approved map. This map of the city shows the location, they're identified by the yellow marker. I won't go over each one, I'll just kind of highlight some of the bigger projects that are hopefully able to come in in the near future. The biggest being in the northeast part of the city, which is Eastview. That annexation back in 2017 included the approval of about 1,400 units, so most of our housing production in the future would come with the Eastview subdivision. Another exciting project that we have coming in the future is the annexation of the Notch. So the Notch area, and, the Notch area is this area right here on, right in the middle of the city, west or east of the city limits, right around Simmerhorn. The annexation area will include everything east of Marengo, then to the city limits. And this is an important annexation for a couple reasons. One, it will really clean off our boundaries, and planners, we really like clean boundaries. But it will help provide better circulation from the new growth in the northeast to the traditional city in the southwest. And the city's often been viewed as two separate cities, where you had new growth in the northeast area, and that looks very different than the traditional city, and that barrier of Highway 99 kind of kept circulation at a minimum. So we do believe that with the annexation of this area and the extension of Carillion and the build-out of A and C Street, which will be, which is Bossow and Simmerhorn connecting to Marengo, that the circulation will improve to the old area. So there are other items on this list, too. We have some commercial development that's listed up there, and Amy Mendez with the economic, or the Economic Development Manager will then talk about those projects.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager, as Chris mentioned. I use this map in economic development and have used it since I started here, actually, really as a marketing tool to show where the residential development is happening. It's really important on the retail front. I know that sometimes we get beat up about how much retail development we have in the pipeline, but the reality of what actually comes to construction on an annual basis is really limited, and so, but it's really nice to be able to show the retail developers and retailers in general where the actual housing growth is anticipated to be happening. And so this is a great map that I use at some of the trade shows that I attend. Speaking on just kind of what's happened in the past year and what's Speaking on just kind of what's happened in the past year and what's in the pipeline as it relates to commercial development, this slide shows some of the new and expanded businesses that we have that are in the pipeline or have opened already. I'm really excited to talk about the Old Town area and how much activity we've seen in the Old Town area in the last six months or so, between Streets Lawn opening and we have Lark's Deli and Donuts that came in, and they're doing a wonderful job down there. Papa's and Wings is under construction. The Little Farmhouse and Back Alley Brew House is also anticipated to be opening within the next several months. And so lots of activity in the Old Town area, which is great to see. You know, that's really the heart of the downtown, the heart of the city. Best Western is expanding, as a lot of you know, and Starbucks has been doing gangbusters at their location up on Highway 99. Some of the retail recruitment efforts that I've been working on, and this has been a focus really since I started here, has been some of the areas that have vacancies on the retail front, new development as it relates to retail land that's available, focusing on the downtown and really how to work with some of the businesses in the downtown, talking to them about some of the opportunities that are out there as it relates to marketing tools, and then infill areas, just where there's minor vacancies in infill development areas. I recently attended in March the International Council of Shopping Centers in Monterey. It was a local trade show that really focuses on Northern California retail development. And so when I attend these trade shows, really the focus is talking to some of these retailers, getting in front of them, making them aware of Galt and some of the opportunities that we have, some of the vacancies that might fit the criteria as it relates to their retail footprint. I did have an opportunity to meet with all of these retailers, really trying to target the locations we have available. So where we have pad sites that are shovel-ready, where we have vacancies, the Dollar Tree vacancy in the Rayleigh Shopping Center was a primary focus, trying to find a tenant to kind of backfill that space. Met with Big Five and with WSS Shoes and Boot Barn, as well as Hibbett, to really pitch that site. And I think we're making some progress on potentially a tenant for that location. So we'll see in the next couple of months where that lands. Sonic has been and shown interest in the area. It's just a matter of, as with some of these other users, is trying to find a location. We have really not a lot of pad sites available for development. And so the Panda Express, Chipotle, Dairy Queen, Wendy's, you know, really focusing on the Twin Cities area because that's where we have a pad site or two available for development, so kind of pointing them in that direction. And then following up as we have new properties available. But those are some of the focuses in areas as it relates to retail development and really trying to just put Galt on the radar of some of these retailers. Part of the reason that we focus on retail development, Chris Arias and I in Community Development really kind of tagged in this, is sales tax. That's one of the primary revenue generators for the city. And when you look at this map, this shows a comparison of the sales tax per capita collected in Galt compared to cities like Rancho Cordova and Lodi. And you'll see Lodi is pretty high up on that list, on that chart there, and that really is just the leakage from our community. People that live in Galt are shopping in Lodi, and it's shown here as it relates to the sales tax per capita. On new and expanded businesses, many of you will recognize this glorious hotel, the Royal Delta Inn. This is a picture of the Royal Delta. When I first started here, this was a project that was sort of in the works, and the city had this property in receivership, found a purchaser, a buyer for the project, and this is what it looks like currently. So the project has been under construction for several months now. The Days Inn project is now slated to hopefully open within the next, I would say, next quarter or so. Also, next to the Days Inn project is a potential tenant for the La Quinta. So as many of you remember, we brought an item for a fee waiver several months ago for La Quinta as it related to development impact fees. And so the plans have been submitted, and that is actually in the process right now, going through approval through the Building Department. And one of the reasons we really try to target hotels has to do with the transient occupancy tax that the city collects, another revenue source. Obviously, not as prominent as the sales tax collection, but the transient occupancy tax, the TOT, that's collected these hotels, is a great revenue source for the city. So we do try to work with the hotels that do show interest in this area. Some of the other items that we've worked on in the last year have, like I said, the La Quinta Inn and fee, Inn and Suites Fee Waiver, that was an item that was approved in December in order to facilitate that project. The temporary infill development fee reduction was put in place in December as well, and that was really to incentivize development in the infill area for residential. Skip is a program that the city actually already used for commercial development, but it's a financing program through the state. And now we are able to use that for residential projects. And then the other item, we Fining Signage, that's a project that we've been working on in, over the past six months or so, and hopefully within the next couple of months we'll have final project renderings to bring to City Council for approval. Upcoming this year, the 2018 focus, you know, we've talked a little bit about the temporary infill fee reduction program, and I know Council has a desire to look at that for potential commercial uses. And so that's something that I've been working, I probably bugged our city attorney more about that than she cares to hear me, but that's one of the projects we have been working on. Business retention, really, there's a lot of business owners here in the audience tonight as it relates to business retention and outreach into our existing businesses, because that's really primarily where your job growth is going to be seen. Industrial business recruitment, as Chris alluded to, the industrial annexation area is really going to be key moving into the future, because that's where our large-scale pieces of property are available for industrial development, and job creation really is the focus there. Community engagement and outreach, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about engaging our communities in some of the decisions that we're making as we move into the future. So that's, and that leads right into our Civic Center Master Plan, which is going to be a big community outreach component that we have moving this project forward. So the Civic Center Master Plan, or the Galt Market Plan, however you, we really need to come up with a key name for this project. But with the Galt Market, obviously, it's a large revenue generator for the city. And so over the past several years, there's been, you know, declining revenue as it relates to the market. The property is underutilized. It operates, the Galt Market operates on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but really is vacant the rest of the week. And there's been a major change in the retail consumers just with regard to how people shop nowadays. Recently, the Community Development Department was able to, they were awarded a grant through the California Energy Commission, and so that grant really, from our perspective, is going to be looking at reuse of that property and how do we redevelop that property so that we can take advantage of the market, also the surrounding areas for highest and best use. And so there's been some ideas about consolidation of government activities, maybe utilizing part of the site for city purposes, including some of the school district offices. One of the items that we've talked heavily about is outreach to stakeholders and wanting to know what the community wants as it relates to this project. During our outreach efforts and as we've talked about this Galt Market, Market Project, the idea was to outreach to some individual architects and engineering groups and developers to try and determine what the best use for this site would be and what would be feasible on this location. And we didn't want to move forward the master plan and put a picture together that, you know, depicts what the community wants and what the city wants, but having it not be feasible from an economic perspective. And so we have partnered with the Lewis Group of Companies, large shopping center developer, residential developer, one of the nation's largest developers, actually. And they are based out of Southern California. We're going to be working with them on this master plan project. This is the entire property that we're going to be evaluating as it relates to this master plan project. And so the blue area being primarily the Galt Market area, as well as the sports complex. Moving forward, though, working with the Lewis Group and doing some community outreach to determine really what the highest and best use for this property will be moving into the future. And with that, I will turn it over to our interim City Manager, Tom.
Thank you, Amy, Mayor, Members of the Council. Good evening. And so you've heard a lot of the opportunities that the City of Galt has and that are created throughout all of our department, a lot of hard work on the part of the Council, staff, members of the community, all coming together to create that, that combined opportunity. But we do face some continuing challenges in, in our city, as do many local governments. With our building and facility maintenance, we have quite a few deferred projects, quite a long list of deferred projects, really around all of our city facilities. We, to include our parks and playgrounds, this is a city that has taken great pride over a very long time with developing recreational opportunities, both active and passive, for our residents. And we, we think of Galt as a fantastic place to live, work, and play. But our parks do need, in many cases, refresh. Some of the play equipment that we have in our parks is aging out. We face increased costs in the maintenance of the landscape area of our parks. And so that is a continuing challenge that we will, we will deal with. And to a certain extent, that feeds into the challenge that we have with our landscape and lighting districts. A few of those districts don't provide the revenue that is necessary anymore. They have been around a long time. They have not kept up with the costs of the, the landscape, the landscape lighting costs in those districts. And so we're working on programs to bring to the Council for further discussion and exploration that may help assist in creating the revenue streams that we need to, to maintain those landscape areas. And those are important, because oftentimes, those are the focal point as you drive down the arterials or as you enter neighborhood areas. And we want to be able to keep those areas up, not only adequately, but in a way that continues their enhancement as, as focal points. The long-term financial stability of the city is important. Claire talked to you earlier about some of the challenges with respect to our long-term financial position. And as we undertake financial decisions on the part of our community, we need to realize that those financial decisions that we make today have an implication a year, two, five, 10 years from now. And so as a council, as a staff, as a community, when we decide to take on financial decisions, we should be looking far down the road to ensure that those decisions can be sustained over the long term. We'll be talking, as Claire indicated, with you in June, in July, about some of the challenges we have from our, with respect to our fiscal condition, and we'll be bringing to you some options and potential decision points relative to creating a sustainable future for the city economically. In continuing on with a couple more challenges, one of the, one of the challenges we will face and will certainly be a topic this summer is our pool. The pool itself has some, is, again, advancing in age. And as, it happens with all facilities, they need refresh and rehab. And the pool in particular has some, some cracks that have developed, not uncommon in pool facilities, but nonetheless, what, what they represent is a significant financial cost to be able to, to remedy. And of course, again, maybe tied in a little bit to the lighting and landscaping, or at least the notion of lighting landscaping and maintaining the physical appearance of our parks, our, our trees throughout our community. And those are not only in parks, but they're throughout any public right-of-way that, that we have, and they stand as an incredible asset for our community. But they are a natural asset, and they continue to grow every day. And so we need to be able to maintain them, and we, we want to maintain them in an appropriate way, under an arborist supervision, to ensure that the trimming we do doesn't harm the tree, but actually promotes the growth, the strength, and the long-term viability of those assets. And so those all represent some of the challenges that we have ahead of us. But I would, I guess, submit to you that, given the opportunities that we have, we have a positive attitude, attitude about meeting these continuing challenges. We'd be happy to answer any questions that the Council may have.
Well, thank you to the directors and staff, Amy, that helped put this together, and thank you, Mr. Haglin, for coming up to that one. Very informative, and I, I really appreciate the honesty and the pluses and the minuses that everyone put out there. It was very impressive. Any other Council want to say anything?
Yeah, I do. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. I think this, the second or third time that I've seen it, but it, the thing I like about it is it's balanced, tells us what we're doing well, the things that we need to work on. And I certainly think that in the next several months that we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and get to work on some of those financial issues that, that we face. Because if we don't now, when will we? And so I think that that's going to be important. But I like the fact that we're engaging the community, we're, our focus is community input and getting feedback from the community on what they want, because that's whose community it is, you know? And, and so we'll, we'll work through that. And thanks to everyone that, again, came together, kind of at the eleventh hour before this presentation was done at the Chamber luncheon, to put this together and do a really, really good job. We have great staff here, and I appreciate, personally, I appreciate all, all that you do. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Donna, can you please read the public comment statement?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the Council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Thank you, Donna. Before we start, I see we have a number of people who filled out cards, about nine, I want, that want to address the Council during public comment. So I just want to emphasize what the city clerk noted regarding the public comment section of the meeting. We are not permitted under the law to discuss or take action on non-agenda items, including items brought up at public comment. That's why when one speaker finishes, we move on to the next speaker. We will listen carefully and take your comments, but cannot engage in discussion or debate. So I'll tell, first, we're going to have Gail Weber, and then I'll tell you, on deck is Rochelle Harron Dean, and after that will be Kirk Smith, and then Terry Carson, if you guys want to.
Good evening. I'm Gail Weber. I am representing the Galt Chamber of Commerce, and I'm actually reading a prepared statement from Terry Parker, since she was unable to be here due to a high school board meeting. I am a small-business owner, industrial-business owner, and residential property owner. Recently, I sat down with a representative from Cal Waste and was told my garbage bill would go from roughly $350 to over $1,700 for the same usage as, as of May 1st. I had heard there would be an increase, but numbers were never given at meetings or through the city's website. Never in a million years would we have guessed it would be over 300%. I know the state has some new mandates they are requiring, but our neighboring cities have just entered into contracts that exceed the timeframe of the new mandates, and the increase was only 2.9%. This is a huge difference from 300%. Elk Grove gives their commercial and industrial owners five to six waste companies to choose from. Why does Galt only have one that we are required to use? It is a monopoly and leads itself to extortient costs to our businesses. What was the incentive for the city to have only one choice for its citizens? For my tenants, I will have to raise each of their leases by $100, and that is with me still absorbing some of the fees. My tenants cannot afford that. One of my tenants asked why they are paying four times the amount for garbage at their business as they do for their home, same garbage and probably less produced. I did not have an answer. I did not have an answer. Galt is a small town. We do not have the resources of a large population to pull from much larger cities to absorb these costs. Most small business owners are in it with their heart and certainly not to get rich. We are lucky that many of our businesses give back to the community generously with even the limited income a small community affords. It is taxation without representation. I call it a tax because we have no option but to pay it, and we cannot use other companies. When did the city know what the exact increase would be to our businesses? Why was this never disclosed? Not even at the meetings in the beginning. We were never given the opportunity to respond to this, and even if we were, the way it was written, if every business person in the city spoke up, it would not have been enough to overturn, even though we are the ones being affected by the over 300% increase. This does not seem legal. I know the new City Council members are probably as surprised as the businesses are about the garbage increase. But I feel confident that if you were in office when this was being negotiated, it would look far different than it does now. I hope that you can fix the mistakes of the past for the sake of our small businesses. We look forward to working with you on righting this wrong. Thank you for your time, Terry Parker.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Rochelle Herrendine?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Rochelle Herrendine, and I'm a board member for the Galt Chamber of Commerce. And tonight, I am representing our members. This includes dozens of small business owners who are, as of May 1st, navigating massive trash rate increases and figuring out what steps that they have to take to continue to stay in business or not. Cal Waste is the exclusive trash provider for both residential and commercial here in Galt, compared to, for example, our neighboring city Elk Grove, who has five-plus waste providers that businesses can choose from and rate shop, more of an open market setup. Bringing it back to last year, Cal Waste's contract was expiring, so the council had formed a negotiating committee, who at the time, there was council member Campion and council member Lamson. During this negotiation period, comparisons were made on the residential side, comparing current trash rates to new trash rates. However, the brunt of the increase was for our commercial side rather than residential. To my understanding, on September 4, 2018, that was the first time rates were given to the public, but they were never put into contacts or any kind of comparison. The contract was approved, which then started a 45-day time clock where residents and commercial owners could protest this increase in contracts. However, our business owners never stood a chance on getting this overturned, because even if every single business owner in Galt showed up to protest it, it wouldn't have reached the minimum 50% that we would have needed for all affected consumers to stop it. Almost an impossible situation for our business owners to get overturned. Fast forward to present time, the contract is improved. It's in full effect. And just to put these rate increases into perspective, one of our local eateries is over a 400% increase. Their monthly bill, that was typically around $400 a month, is now over $1,900 a month. That's $18,000 a year. Another longtime business and staple in our community was hit with over $50,000 of increase per year. The solutions that our business owners were presented was to create less trash, which is eventually what they're going to have to do, by either laying off employees, closing their doors, closing certain days per week, or closing their doors indefinitely. It costs money to run a business, and it costs money to run a city. Both require customers. The city's customers are its businesses and its residents. When businesses shut down, money that generates for our city leaks outside. Our city needs thriving businesses to help generate funds to keep everything going, not to mention the countless programs like Little Leagues, County Youth Sports, FFA, 4-H, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and our local nonprofits that go to these business owners and depend on donations to help continue to improve our community. So now, council, we ask you, since you got us into this situation, what are you going to do to help our local businesses mitigate this? If the contract is set and we're facing no ability to change the rates, the city needs to figure out where and how they will help, possibly reallocating the host and administrative fees that the City of Galt receives from Cal Waste, which is about $35,000 per month or anywhere from 400 to half a million per year. Can that be rerouted back to our businesses? How can we expect to attract more businesses if we can't currently retain our thriving businesses right now? How can you expect our businesses to pay comparable trash rates to businesses that are in the Bay Area? Yet, the city still wants businesses to help produce revenues and taxes. So, council, we're asking you, what are you going to make, or what are you going to do to make this right for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herrendine. Kirk Smith?
Kirk Smith, Velvet Grill. You know, most of the people in this room I know quite well. I call friends. I don't enjoy doing this. It's not my forte. Before I get to my stuff, that I had already kind of thought, I was listening to the presentations from some of the members and council. This is not directed to you, but you gave the, these businesses that we're going to attract, try to attract, are they aware of the garbage rates? They should know that, because it's excessive. And then your presentation, the long-range planning finances, I thought, you know, the city didn't do a very good job when they bumped the trash rates, taxed the businesses, $18,000 extra for me, $50,000 extra for somebody else I know. They weren't very smart. They should have taken more, you know, because why did they stop at 400%? And where'd they come to that number? You know, it just, I have, I was originally going to read this in my five minutes. This is the amended, restated collection services agreement, City of Galt, Cal Waste Recovery Systems, October 5, 2015. But, you know, five minutes, plus it's kind of boring. Didn't think I'd have time. I have extra copies if anybody wants them before I leave. You know, a lot of the stuff I was going to say has been said by the previous two. My biggest thing is, we've been in business since 2012. I've lived in Galt since 1990, kids born, raised, you know, great town. I was at a local business today discussing this, and happened to see on their wall the City of Galt Business License, which is, you know, a little fee, tax. And I wanted to take it off the wall and, first of all, I think, that's an annual thing, right? And it's a pittance from what they decided to take from the businesses. Rochelle said, you know, what's this council going to do? And obviously, they need to think of something, because this isn't going away. This is not going away. Believe me, other businesses know this. Businesses that are going to come in this town are already starting to be aware of it. This is going to affect it. You know, it's, love this town. You don't know how many thousands and thousands of dollars in donations and direct cash to organizations, clubs, then services we do. That's got to come from somewhere. The city took $18,000 a year, okay? You know, I could lower my business hours, close the doors altogether. $18,000 a year is my increase in trash. Last year, the payroll that we paid to mostly Galt people was over $550,000. Take that away. That affects the community. You know, I just, yeah, I'm a little perturbed. Guys got to do something. Okay? Thanks.
We have Terry Carson, then Chris Newell, then Ray Patel, then Sunny Patel.
I am Terry Carson with Carson's Coatings, and I'm kind of going to say the same thing. I don't have a prepared thing ready. But it's, you know, ours is hitting us at 369%, almost 400% also, and it's a lot of money, you know? And I'm going to have to raise, you know, Fitness Pro and stuff, because they dump in our trash, and, you know, it affects everybody. And our employees also, too, are all Galt employees. And I'm a 28-year-old business here in town, so I didn't pay this much when I had 100 employees. And it's just, it is outrageous. It's just not, if I went to a customer and said, I'm going to raise you 400%, they'd be shopping me. They wouldn't come back. We don't even have that option to shop it and get another provider. It's, you know, our hands are tied, and it's just a lot of money. And, you know, I know myself, I'm just going to get rid of the five-yard dumpster and not have it anymore, because instead of paying 213, I'm going to pay 803 a month for it. I'm not going to do it. And it's, you know, we got to make cuts, and people that come for donations, you know, that want us to support and stuff, you know, we got to take that from the budget and put it somewhere else now, because, you know, and pay for garbage instead of supporting the community. It's not right. It's not right. Nobody raises 400% to a customer. I've never heard of any business doing that. And then the ability not to shop it is wrong also. You know, we should be able to shop our own then. But anyway, I'm angry, too. So that's all I have to say now.
Thank you, Terry. Chris? Chris Newell?
Mayor, council members, departments overhead. I haven't been in this building. I've been in business here 24 years. I've probably been in this building four times. One's when Judge Hinky was a judge here and I was on the jury. Wasn't on the other side. Two was another time that I went to see a city council meeting, and then when I put the city seal up on the wall. So for me to come here today and try to explain how this has affected me as a business, not just me, but all these businesses, right? I tried what you said the other day to raise my rate. What I, I've been raised like 220%. That was my garbage rate. So I feel really lucky compared to the rest of you. So, anyway, had a company outside of Galt call me and said, hey, would you come and do some work for Wells Fargo? Sure, I'll send out a bid. Then I tried raising it 221%. Went by another company today, going by and putting a letter on that window. I just want to talk about fair business practice. You know, to be fair, I have to compete against a home-based business. Guess why? He don't have to pay $438 a month in garbage. Guess what? I have to pass that on to the next customer now, because my rates have been increased. As I showed you, I didn't get the job when I tried increasing my rates to 221%. Job just went elsewhere. And that's the way it is with your city, too. You are allowed to say, okay, if you don't like my services, great, I'm going to go to somebody else. You guys do that to me. I used to do all the banners, military banners in the city. Don't do it anymore. Because they didn't like my rates, they went somewhere else. But with garbage, I have to pay it. I don't get to go somewhere else? Yes, we are a part of the sales tax collected that they spoke up in this demonstrate, or the PowerPoint. What if some of these businesses went away and you didn't get to collect that sales tax anymore? I'm just saying, it's not everybody that owns a small business is rich. We just do our best, all right? I know you guys aren't wealthy. I do business, I mean, you do business, right? Do business. So with that, I'm just going to leave it. Like I said, I've only been here three or four times, but this was important enough for me to be here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Ray Patel?
Good evening, all. Good evening. So I've been informed on April, last week of April, a guy named Jeff from Cal Waste, that, hey, this is Jeff calling, and your garbage service going to, right now, you're paying $298 for four yard. Your price is going to be $1,200. I say, what? For what? A four yard? Okay, then I'll call Waste Management. Oh, no, no, you cannot call them. We have territory, right? I say, really? So why don't you call Carlos and the city? City increase the rate, not us. City's mandating. I say, really? So I left a message for Carlos, who directly worked under Mike, the public work director. And sure enough, he never returned my call until Mike, with all due respect, he's been very responsive to me and my son, and arranged a meeting with Cal Waste. Until then, Cal Waste never, ever bothered to contact me or come to my business. As they promised, I found out that they would reach out to all business. And until then, we never happened to talk. Meanwhile, me and my son were attending a hotel convention, like Emmy Mendez goes to convention to bring the city, and they'll say, oh, come on over to our city, we have this much to offer you. Here, these guys have no tools. You guys are us. You guys representing us. You're one of us, going in, sitting in the chair, voted and elected by us. You representing us, you will look in the, and not necessarily you will willing to do wrong for us, but not knowing much about business and the situation. I represent, I've been ambassador to 20,000 member-strong association known as Asian-American Hotel Owner. So I represent from all the way, from Algro to Merced and going Tracy, all the way. I represent now my son, Sunny, represent as ambassador. So when we have issues, we go to Washington. We literally go to Senator, one-on-one. We contribute to PAC, PAC Committee, you know, and so we provide fund, and we take our problems, and they listen, and they introduce the bill, and it becomes a law. It happened within my time. Like, for example, 1031 exchange, what it is, if I have a property I bought like 10 years ago, and now the property is of 10 million, I'm selling it. So IRS code allows us to buy similar property, and the tax differs, so pumping the economy, you know? So there's an impact. When we have a problem, we come to you, politician, to explain our problem, and you have to listen, it don't work otherwise. So we went to Waste Management, and we say, hey, Waste Management, let me tell you guys, I'm in a hotel business, so I can give you the best illustration I can. So Waste Management is a stock exchange company. You might have seen the green, bright trucks in Beverly Hills to New York, everywhere, you know? So it's the best of the best companies, like a Marriott in a hotel level. And like Cal Waste is like a budgeting run by individual. Believe me or not, this is a fact I'm telling you. So what makes you think that they, Waste Management, won't be in compliance of California state mandated law, and Cal Waste has so much impact? So I went to Mike, and I've been told, oh, Mike himself told me, oh, they have to invest a lot of money. So what? I'm building the motel, frontage improvement, Chris make me do, other public work make me do the frontage improvement, where I do bring the electric light under, phone line under, Comcast under, 500 price costs, this cost of doing business. Come on, Cal Waste, you are an individual business. You do capital investment. Do not misguide the citizen and city council members. And guy like Carlos who's paid by city and advocating for Cal Waste, this is very unethical, very wrong, and price gouging is very, very illegal. You city council members has no business to make one individual company so benefit and rich. I don't know why we will, as it is, Galt has been criticized for big impact. For example, I'm doing hotel in Northern California. Believe me or not, every hotelier developer knows who Ray Patel is, and they know what's going on in the city, lot of city hotel.
Mr. Patel? You have 10 seconds.
Okay, yeah. So my point is, the waste, I've been done five minutes?
Five minutes already, sir.
Mayor, mayor, can I request, because this is a big issue, can you request other couple minute to this?
Yeah, please. So at this point, I'm, 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 I'm requesting, look, I'm not gonna open my hotel. I'm not willing to open my hotel where I do pay more for the refusal service than water and ga-, sewer combined. I do pay more for the sewer. That's, that's outrageous. Water is the most important commodity to survive in the world. You kidding me? I'm not willing to open Days Inn. I'm not willing to ground bread La Quinta. This is my protest and I, I, I fight for my fellow citizens. I don't care. With grace of Lord, I'm well off. I can survive to leave that property closed. I'm telling you, I'm begging you to understand people. Let Waste Management come and take over open market, at least for commercial person. They misguided commercial customer. Honestly, they did. Majorities residents which are not impacted that much and they, they is doing wrong way. They're doing wrong way which we are looking for a big lawsuit coming to a city which is not healthy. Cities at this, is that, this city gonna be straight broke, ten taco trucks popping up and all businesses closing down, no tax revenue. I'm telling you what's coming, believe me. I, I, I have no further to say. I love this city. I'm so, so appreciative to you, you and sir to you because I took the filthy of the filthiest project to make you guys proud and you putting me down. I don't appreciate this.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Sonny Patel, then Lauren Thompson, Pedro Ramos, Catherine, him after that.
Good evening. So as you know, we're doing the Days Inn and the La Quinta project. And, you know, when we do these, as a business owner, when we do these studies, we look at what the feasibility of doing business in a certain city is, you know, and Amy's job, for example, is to bring businesses to a city like this, you know, to help the city grow. Now, something that we look at is cost factors and a cost factor like that where, where waste on the national average is about, is about like what the city of Stockton does, right? They, they have Waste Management and they have an open market so they have, I think it's recycle, I forgot the exact name. They have Republican recycle services over there where they have an open market system. So their, their prices definitely jumped too with the changes, but it only jumped by about fourteen to eighteen dollars, you know, and that's, that's from three hundred sixty dollars to three hundred eighty-four, which isn't significant, but you're jumping from, from two ninety-eight, which is what we, the service we had, all the way to twelve hundred, which is just ridiculous. That's a four hundred percent jump. And it's a deterrence factor for any business to wanna come to a city to do business when waste is that expensive. And like a lot of the fellow citizens of this city, you know, they, they're just doing small businesses. I'm a, I'm a real estate agent and we, we also do commercial properties where we, where we have strip centers. And a average strip center, if it's a, you know, based on square footage, this is close to about seventy percent of the, of the storefront cost of a rental, you know, and if, if, it's like, how do you justify spending on a, on a business when your waste is equivalent to your unit for your, to rent a unit and you have to pay for commercial waste, you know, and it's just, it's a ridiculous amount. So I think it's something that you guys definitely need to look into in terms of seeing what we can do to get it into an open market because like our neighboring cities, it's not just, it's not just Stockton, it's not just Elk Grove. It's across the board. Majority of cities have an open market when it comes to waste. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense when the city of Galt is charging the same as like major cities in terms of waste collection. You know, on average, it's like the, the cost now at four hundred percent more, that's equivalent to a city level like San Jose doing waste collection about four times a week. And we're doing two, two weeks in a small, really small city that's, that's trying to grow, that's trying to bring franchises in, that's just like fast food level we're trying to bring in. You know, we barely got a Starbucks. We're trying to bring two hotels in. It's just not justifiable to charge major city levels in a small city. And I really think that's something you guys have to look into and change if we wanna grow as a city together because it's affecting all the small businesses, it's affecting the large businesses, and it's gonna deter any business to wanna come to city to even conduct business if the prices are outrageous. And like everyone else has said, right, it's, it's one company benefiting from, at the expense of everyone else, right? It's just, it doesn't make sense. It's a, it's a monopoly when we don't have an option to, to shop around for, for cheaper options when other companies are willing to even come here and, and compete. They, they really are and if they're able to, they would gladly do it. So I definitely think you guys have to look into your options and, and definitely make some changes here to, to benefit businesses and to benefit the city in the long term. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Next up, Lauren Thompson.
Council members, mayor, staff. Uh, I got a prepared speech, but I, pretty much everything that I wanted to cover has already been covered. So I did want to make sure everybody knows that I'm representing Spawns Cookie Company and we've been here since nineteen fifty-eight in this town. And I don't think that throughout that history, we've come here to talk about anything of this level. So usually it's very, uh, it's a very good conversation this time. I'm not real happy with what's going on. So, um, Spawns has been referenced in a couple of other, um, presentations. Uh, we are the fifty thousand dollar business. Um, so we have a four-yard container that they pick up five days a week and also recycle that gets picked up four days a week. And, uh, we were paying about seven hundred and eighty dollars a month and they proposed for the same service, uh, right near forty-eight hundred dollars a month. So we went from paying about ten thousand dollars to nearly sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, obviously, we, we're trying to mitigate our, doing our own things, which has been a good thing. We got to look at some of our things and evaluate things that we are doing and finding options that never really existed before and that's a positive. And I'm not here to bash on CalWest. I'll tell you that right now. They're a local business. I, I know that they have, uh, good hearts. I just don't understand how they possibly could put a six hundred percent increase on our business for trash and recycle pickup. Um, it seems almost like nobody really understood the specifics of what this would do, but in my case, I would have to sell almost a half a million of those little tubs at my current profit margin to pay for the fifty thousand dollar increase that they're proposing. I'm not gonna sell them in our little store over there. I know that. And it would be like getting two grocery chains into our thing. Thirty percent increase is what that means in that sector of our business. And that, that's just not doable. So, uh, they, the money has to come from somewhere and we have to get better at what we're doing and, uh, you know, CalWest has the right to do what they choose to do, uh, business-wise and I, I completely agree with that. But, uh, we as a community have to stand up and say enough is enough when the time's there. And, uh, I think all of these ladies and gentlemen have done that. I, I can't, um, say anymore than Mr. Patel said and that's, and, and what, uh, some of the other speakers have said. I hope we can go back and revisit this. Uh, it, uh, definitely is something that's a concern for the city of Galt and I care deeply for the city. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Pedro Ramos?
Good evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Pedro Ramos. We're Ramos Jewelers and I just got hit with two hundred dollars increase just on my, on my little business that I generate. I'll say probably a ten-gallon bag a week. And I gotta pay now two hundred and fifty dollars. For me to make those extra two hundred dollars, I, I can't. I told the wife, I says, "We need to move. We need to move our business. Uh, we've been here for twenty-nine years and we can afford this. We can find probably better rates in Elk Grove, better square footage rates." And we chose to Galt. It's great. The people are here. Uh, they're great. Police department is super. Uh, city council members, I'm sure you can work out something with, uh, CalWest and help us. We can't just leave the city for, you know, just standing here. And really, it's, it's everybody. It's not just me. You're hearing everybody, right, right, allowing, uh, CalWest to generate this big increase. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pedro. Next is Catherine Hom and then Amy Sandu.
Hi, um, mayor and city council members. Um, my name is Catherine Hom. I'm with Galt Supermarket. Um, here, like everyone else, I'm here to talk about the garbage rate. My rate before was four hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty-four cents a month. Um, my, this, my rate new, rate now for the same exact service would be three thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents a month. That is a thirty-six thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollar and sixty-four cents a year increase. That's a seven hundred fifty percent increase. Um, and when I, like everyone else here, asked Jeff from CalWest what other options there were, he said there were none. Well, actually, he told me I had the option to haul my trash myself if I didn't want to pay that, um, which obviously is not something I can do. Um, I cannot afford this increase. To pay over forty thousand in trash is just, it's beyond what I can think. I have no idea honestly where I'm supposed to get this money from. Um, it's hard enough to survive and to just tack on an extra forty thousand dollars that I was not prepared for. I, I don't know what I'm gonna do. Um, I have taken options like everyone else to re-downsize my garbage, trying to do more in recycling and everything, um, get less pickups. I'm forcing everyone to recycle, making sure we're doing, I'm taking some of my trash home and dumping it if I can't fill it because I can't afford that rate. Um, and still doing all that, it has cut my trash down rate, um, but it's still, I, I was able to cut my trash down rate to about, um, eighteen hundred a month. That's still a two hundred percent, two, three hundred percent increase. I still don't know where I'm gonna come up with twenty thousand dollars. Um, and, you know, like most other business owners here, I can't afford to raise my rates, um, and expect customers to still, still shop with me. Um, there are so many other options. Um, as you were saying in your previous presentation about all the leakage going out to load height, if we all have to raise our rates, nobody's gonna shop with us. They're gonna see, well, now I had to raise my Coke prices by a dollar, two dollars. And they're gonna see, oh, in load height, the food co over there has it for five ninety-nine. They're just gonna drive the ten minutes away to get it. Um, it, yeah, it's just crazy. So either way, it's either the garbage is gonna put us out of business or raising our rates is gonna put us out of business because nobody's gonna wanna shop with us. Um, I understand it is hard and, you know, we do need more money in it, but raising the rates so ridiculously high on all our businesses isn't gonna help the community at all because if none of us can survive and all of us are gonna be shut down because of it, that's gonna be hard. Um, and this is very sad for me because this is my family's fiftieth year in, with our store this year. And for us to think about having to shut down because we can't afford a forty thousand dollar increase in garbage, um, is very difficult for me. Um, so I hope you guys take this, take what we're all saying into consideration because, um, this is a lot. I mean, this is, my grandfather did this, my parents did it, and now like my first couple of years trying to get into this and I'm just being completely shut down by garbage. And it's not just this year. It's the proposed rates next year. It's gonna be, if, even if I, you know, stay what I'm doing, it's gonna be increased again next year by a hundred fifty dollars a month. And then the year after that, in their proposed rate, it's gonna be increased again. So even right now, if I somehow manage to do it, how am I supposed to keep up with the hundred-something dollar increase every year that they're proposing for the next two years? So it's, it's not just this year I'm concerned about. It's with the following years and the following increase too. Um, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy Sandu?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Um, I have the same issue as everyone else in the audience. We have increased our rate by five hundred percent in our business, best, best restaurant. We've been a long-term resident and a business owners, but this is ridiculous that all of a sudden we have to pay all this five hundred increase. And would like to council members to help if there is possibility what we can do with the Waste Management, talk to them or whatever we can do. So even with all the businesses, you know, we can't all afford it. And some people can have to shut the doors because they can make it, because they can afford it. We cannot afford this, this much increase at all. So that's it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Is there any other public comment?
Okay. Um, the city and CalWest have been partners in providing for the city's waste collection needs for many years. We recognize that under this new franchise agreement, commercial rates have significantly increased based on the new service levels requiring to meet the state of California's seventy-five percent recycling mandate and, um, less trash. Under the franchise agreement, CalWest should be working with commercial customers to develop a waste and recycling service level that meets the needs of commercial customers. The city will work with CalWest to ensure that this happens at the lowest possible cost to customers under the franchise agreement. I believe I have some other council members that would like to say something.
Uh, first of all, thank you for all the, uh, small business owner, all the residents coming here to this meeting and, uh, express their concern. Uh, this is a big issue. And I'm talking about whoever have a business, they know a fewer bill can be increased four hundred to five hundred percent. It can affect on the business. Uh, this, uh, this franchise agreement, it was done on September four, twenty eighteen. It was very written in the agreement. I don't know, there are a lot of pages. Uh, the only thing, as a new council member, I have the authority when there is protest. And lot of people already know there was no protest. You cannot, the only way you can do the protest if there is fifty-one percent is protest. And that's, I'm talking, even each single business will say, "I'm not agree this, uh, this much increase and you cannot win the protest." So that's why a lot of business, uh, owner, they don't come to their meeting. And, uh, I see that. But I'm talking about whatever done is, is already done. It's already a franchise agreement and we already understand the franchise agreement. This is between CalWest and city of Galt. So city of Galt already make a contract with them. Uh, there is lot of things in, in the contract. I think most of the person, especially, uh, council member, they are a reading. Uh, you can make a difference when you initially negotiating there. But I don't know how come, you know, it's, it's like in five hundred percent, six hundred percent. I never see in my life, single time, five hundred percent increase any utility bill in this city or another city. Yes, there is increase. There always can be increase in future. You know, there is a state, they can do mandate things. And then, and then we have to live with that. But instantly, everybody, even we, our house, we have a budget. If we don't meet the budget, what we gonna do? We have to cut down the services. Same thing all the business owner. The business owner cannot afford it. What they gonna do? They're gonna, going to shut their door. And we not gonna, and what happen is can affect on the city for the revenue, sale tax, anti-tax, uh, other tax, property tax, whatever we getting, we are going to stop that. And the other hand, I know we are in a budget crunch and we're gonna work next month for the budget. But this is also a budget. We need to increase the revenue. If we are not increasing the revenue, if we are discourting the business, we not gonna get the sale tax. We are not getting tax, tax. And that would, upon the budget side, we're gonna go more negative. So I'm talking about, I'm just, it's this time I'm asking all the council, you know, there is franchise tax, uh, franchise... there is franchise tax, franchise agreement is already done, but there is way, there is room to look up. I'm, I'm gonna ask the city attorney, there is a room, if there, we find a language, we have an expert to find out. The other thing is Cal Waste, they are good people, they are local residents, but what on the contract side, we need to work together. And we need to work with the Cal Waste, we need to do every effort. If there any way we can adjust something, little bit or more, whatever we need to do. And that's why I will ask the council, if we can ask the city manager to look this thing is the next meeting or something, we can bring them back to the public. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just briefly, as a reminder, we can, we can, you can briefly respond, you can direct staff to return, decide if you want something on a future agenda, so just as we, as the council addresses further comments.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit up here and not say anything. I'm sorry. I mean, put me in the timeout box, whatever. But, I, I mean, I, it's hard for me, I'm just biting my lip up here and just because I'm so angry with all of you. As you know, I'm a business owner as well as, as Paul is. I'm with Mr. Patel. Our rates went from $240 to $1,200. My frustration with this is that we're hearing it's all about these mandates, but yet, what we're hearing from Cal Waste that's reaching out to us, it's not geared in a way that's promoting recycling. We're being penalized. We're, we're just being told if I have a four-yard dumpster, I have to have an equal amount in recycle, but it's not free, I have to pay for it. So what could have been 200 to 500 is now 1,200. How, how, how was that diversion? How, when you're being penalized for recycling, waste management actually provides a four-yard container at a much lower cost, and they give you the recycling at no charge. Hearing some of you speak, you know, I'm thinking, you know, I saw Amy's presentation and I kept thinking, you know, I saw the three things up there, business retention, industrial recruitment, community engagement. I mean, all three of those things, it's like strike one, strike two, strike three against us on those three things. I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and place blame at how this happened. You guys can dig around, you can figure out how it, how it transpired. Bad negotiating, bad rollout, you know, bad output, input to the community. I mean, there was notices that went out, you know, I have these notices, you know, it looked like this, you know, there was 296 of them that went out, but you know what? It, it wouldn't have mattered. 300 protests wouldn't have made a difference. You know, even, even if, even if, even if the, obviously, the outreach was poor because look how many people have come and protested. And you are just the brave few that wanted to come speak, not, not the others that didn't want to. This, to me, is a quality of life issue. I mean, this is not about business in Galt, this is, this is about our community as a whole. This is a, this is probably, I've lived in this town my whole life, this is probably the single most thing I've seen to just, to critically injure business that I've ever seen in this town. We have businesses that you guys were up here, 61 years for Spon's Cookies, 30 years for, you know, for Ramos, 25 for Galt Sign, you know, 50 years for IGA. These are, these are small-town mom-and-pop businesses that have put in decades in our town. And this one bit of what's happening now is gonna be the death nail to many of those businesses. I, I know that we have a contract, it's pretty ironclad as far as the way it's, the language is. Our city manager has been very receptive to all of you. Paul and I and other council members have met with him. He has been going over with a fine-tooth comb, trying to find any chinks in that that we can do. And, but, but I agree with Paul, I think that we need to be creative and think outside the box. I don't think the answer is, oh, well, we can't do anything. We have to try. We can't promise you anything, but what we can do is we can try our hardest. And I, and I know that, you know, you guys will believe me, spoke to a lot of you out there that, you know, that we, if there is something that, that can be done, we will try. But we can't make any promises. So I just wanna leave you folks with, you know, that, knowing that we sympathize with you, I personally sympathize with a lot of you, and I wish we could say more this evening about it, but I agree with Mr., with Councilmember Sandu that we need to bring this back or something, we, we need to visit this because this, this will, this is gonna just destroy our economy. Budget, whatever, doesn't matter. What, what do we, if we've run everybody out of town, who cares? I mean, what, what are we gonna do?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I, in the interest of remaining within the law of the Brown Act, I'm gonna save most of my comments for my individual conversations that I've had with the folks in the community. But I do believe that we should ask staff to bring it back, bring this issue back for a full ability to talk about it in open public, properly notice the community so that those who want to come and participate can. And I agree that this needs to be looked at because it is one of the single things that will drive business out of town. I mean, it's, it's already doing it. And so I think we need to do whatever we can to address this issue, not only with the current businesses, but for God's sakes, we're putting Ms. Mendez in a spot that she's never gonna be able to do her job. That's all I have to say about it. Again, I, I have a lot more to say, but in the interest of staying within the law, I wanna reserve my comments for later.
I, I'm a little shocked at some of what I've heard tonight, too, and I'm concerned as well. I think, I think what we need to do is focus on a resolution, and that obviously has to include Cal Waste. Cal Waste has to be at the table, and I think they need to be as creative as possible to work with these businesses. Certainly, these rates are untenable. And I don't own a business in town, but if I did, I would be shocked. So I, I am in full agreement that to have staff come forward or come forward in the future with a future report, you know, and hopefully in consultation with Cal Waste to see, you know, what efforts they are willing to take in order to resolve and alleviate some of the concerns.
I, too, was a little surprised. If I would have heard 600, 700% increase, I would have, I would have remembered that, so.
It was never mentioned.
Yeah, it was never mentioned. So I agree if we can bring that back and get Cal Waste at the table and figure out some, some solutions and some help, that would be wonderful. All right. Thank you. All right. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Thank you, everyone, for your public comment if you wanna sneak out. All right, Vice Mayor Farmer.
Went to the library authority meeting. It was pretty good. We didn't really talk about a whole lot, it was short, but was able to meet some, some other members of other communities and make some small talk and kinda talk about some similar issues, not related to the library specifically, but it was, overall, it was good. We're gonna have our upcoming budget meeting soon, and I think it's about next week, I think. So, yeah, it was, it was interesting. First one I've been to, I missed the first one because of a family issue, but, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandu?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Campion?
Yeah, well, you and I attended the CAS meeting last night along with the city manager, public works director, community development director, a couple of board members, and talked about the capital improvements they're doing with the bond measures, and they had some good presentations with some pictures. Obviously, you can see some of the improvements over Galt High, the football field and so forth. So it was an informative and helpful meeting. We did talk about transit a little bit more, Mike mentioned that a little bit, and they may be getting back to us on that.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozano?
I, I just, I'm gonna be brief. There was a lot that went on at CACOG at the last meeting, but it's kind of just a follow-up from what we did before. The, talked again about the MTPSCS and rolling that out for public comment with the preferred scenarios. So that'll be, that'll be out and about shortly. We're making a big push now with the Green Means Go program. In fact, CACOG directors are starting to contact individuals, lawmakers down at the Capitol to ask for some assistance in the area of the Green Means Go program. And I reported on that last time we met, and the ask is $100,000 for four years, each year for four years, so $400,000 to, to address the Green Means Go program so that we can do some things in the area of reducing greenhouse gases. And again, just kind of the last piece, the, there was a presentation that had to do with innovative mobility. It was a workshop, it's pretty cool. Some other jurisdictions are doing things with applications where multiple mobility pieces come together on one application. So if you wanted to go from, and a great scenario would be from, from here in our city to, let's say, a specific location in downtown where you would have to take maybe Uber or Lyft, one of the rideshare companies, and then you would take a bus line, maybe a regional bus trip, and then get on Light Rail. You could do it all from one app rather than having to, and it, and it, rather than timing your, the app appropriately. And so, it's kind of a cool concept. And, and again, you do it from one application, and it coordinates your arrival. So, once you put it in, it is approved, and you get to where you're gonna get when, when you're supposed to get there. So I thought that was pretty cool. So they're, they're talking about doing a lot of these things through, you know, unmanned shuttles and, and items like that where we're getting cars off the road more and, and using public transit and private, private transit. So that's pretty much it. We have a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting on Thursday, and I'll report back on that next meeting.
Thank you. Like Councilmember Campion said, we attended the CAS meeting last night. We did talk about the Corollium Master Plan also. We were invited to the ribbon cutting for the Galt High Stadium. Get your calendars out, June 11th. And then I also attended the Air Quality Control Board where they talked about Green Means Go. Presentation, we had a presentation on Assembly Bill AB 1418, which essentially requires local utility companies to account for school bus electrification in their resource planning. So help out purchasing electric buses. California has some of the oldest buses in the nation, and they are getting very costly to maintain. Students, mechanics, and teachers and drivers are exposed daily to dangerous levels of air pollution. So electric school buses, though they're costly, they will save the district thousands of dollars in maintenance, which is kind of something that came up at the CAS meeting, too. So they're, they're kind of correlating if we can get them out there and to plug in some buses. And the sooner we can convert our schools to fleet, fleets to electric, the sooner we can help save schools a significant amount of dollars to create a more healthful environment for the students and our community. I don't know if you've all ever been behind a bus, it's not very much fun if your windows are down. Had the youth commission meeting last night also. It was the last meeting of the year for the graduating seniors and the members not chosen to return. And we have six out of 10 as new youth members of the council will have to approve and appoint soon. And I also attended a CERT Level 2 training at the CSD Training Facility on Saturday. I think that's all for now. All right. Information consent calendar. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
May I have a comment?
Oh, can I not say something?
I don't wanna pull that agenda, but I was talking to Tom, and he can get back with you. What's the Fund 011? You know, that's the Commander Action, number four?
Yes.
Number four?
Is Claire's?
Fund 11.
Oh, did she leave? Mike? Mike Selling?
Yeah.
Fund 011, Fund 11? Do you, is that transportation? Transportation fund?
Number three, the bottom line.
Oh.
Fund 11.
My apologies, I missed the question.
They, they'd just like to know what Fund 011 is. Do you know off the top of your head?
It's a test, isn't it?
It is a test.
I believe that it is one of the funds that holds some grants, and so that fund, we spend in advance of receiving the funds. I don't know for sure if it's the transportation, but it is one of those funds that, that runs grant through. It might have multiple purposes. I can get further information for you and bring it to you later.
Okay, thank you.
This is in relation to item three. Sorry, I was, I was unaware of the context. Yes, that's for the traffic impact fees. Sorry, I didn't recognize the number.
So Kimberly, since we're kind of out of order, can I still read the motion? Or do we need to pull that?
No, you don't need to pull that since it is consent calendar. We're just confirming there's no public comment, I assume, on the consent calendar.
Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? All right. Now, can I get a motion to accept the minutes as submitted? Receive and file warrants as submitted? Adopt a resolution. One, a public at-grade crossing agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad. Two, amendment to the Development Impact Fee Credit Agreement with Elliott Homes Incorporated. Three, First Amendment to the Subdivision Improvement Agreement for River Oaks 3C. And four, appropriate $105,000 for Union Pacific Railroad Agreement in fiscal year 2019-20 from Fund 11 available balance.
Do a second.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson? Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Do we have any schedule matters?
No.
Regular calendar? Treasurer's office. City investment policy for fiscal year 2019, I believe, that's by Mr. Farrell.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, before you, in your electronic calendars tonight, was the, there are two copies. One was a, what I call a clean investment policy. In other words, you know, all the, all the remarks have been cleared. And then following that was a redlined copy. And I did just make a few verbiage changes from last year to this year. I'm always asked which changes are, were made. But before I, before I get into that, I wanna tell you a little story and why I made those changes. I belong to the California Municipal Treasurers Association, and about four or five years ago, within that organization, I started what is called the Investment Policy Certification Program. So any entity within the state of California, whether it be a city, a county, a special district, water district, may submit their investment policies to me. I have a group of evaluators, and then those evaluators evaluate that investment policy. If they reach a certain score, then they, their investment policy becomes certified. And so, over the past four or five years, I've probably seen about 80, 85 different investment policies throughout California. Because of, I took the best of, of them, them, and that's why I made the changes in the redline version to now what you see is the clean version. So the most important aspects to an investment policy is basically it's a roadmap of how, how the city invests their funds. And by government code, it has to be presented in a public meeting once a year. Whether, whether you're aware of it or not, the city council actually has the authority or responsibility, I should say, to invest any, any idle cash. Because of what's in the investment policy, you are delegating that authority officially to the city treasurer. So that's, that's, and then also in that policy, you're dictating as to what the treasurer can and cannot invest into. And so those, that's the, those, that's the main purpose to, to this investment policy. The most significant change in this year's policy is on the very last page where just last week, we have been, we, as a city, have to have what is called a custodian of our, of our government agencies and our, and our outside CDs. For the last 20-some years, we've used City National Bank out of Los Angeles. And just as of last week, I, I was able to change that. We now have a new custodian, and that is Zion's Bank in Seattle, Washington. We now have a new custodian, and that is Zion's Bank in Seattle, Washington. The reason for that change was because we were able to save about $6,200 a year, just in, by making that change. Again, same functions, same or better customer service, but we're simply able to save 6,200, which, you know, that directly hits the, hits the general fund. So, that's, that's very positive. So with those changes, looking at your clean version, I ask that you accept the investment policy for the fiscal year 2019-2020.
Can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Second.
I believe that was made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Campion. Public comment? All right, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Sean, I'd like to thank you for doing the redline version. That makes it much easier to review. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Saves you time. Thank you.
All right. Treasurer Report for period ending March 2019. Hope you have some good news there.
Next. So, so before you have the Treasurer's Report, March 2019, and, and last quarter, I talked about an inverted yield curve, and there is still an inverted yield curve on the economy. And I'll give you today's rate. So, I can go out and buy a three-month treasury at 2.42%, okay? But a five-year treasury is at 2.26%. So, the longer term you go, the less rate you're going to get. That's why it's called an inverted yield curve. And, and as I said last time, and I still mean this, that, I mean, that's one red flag that you look for as far as an upcoming recession. You know, when that's going to hit, I don't, I, no one knows. Okay? So, just the highlights of this, there is a Farmers and Merchants Certificate of Deposit that is maturing actually next, or this coming Monday. I purchased this three-year CD, well, three years ago, and at the time, the rate was 1.2%. Okay? That was a great rate at the time. All right? So, but in today's world, it's changed a little bit. So I changed it down to a two-year CD that when it renews on Monday, and just I finalized the new rate, and that will be 2.35%. So, we're getting, what, 115, 110 basis point increase. Okay? So which is good, but it's still, you know, that one thing is not going to save us. And then I also want to report the nine months' worth of fiscal year interest earned, and that is $662,000. So, which is very positive. That's, that's good. I expect the full fiscal year to show up right around about 800,000 this, this year, which is, which is positive compared to other years. And it's, it's just because interest rates have risen a little bit. That's, that's the reason why. So with that, I ask that the council approve the Treasurer's Report unless you have any questions.
Yeah, any questions, any public comment? Any council questions?
I have a quick one.
Yeah.
So, so how does this year compare to, say, last five years? Has this been a good year for our, for our return?
Compared to the last five years, yes. The answer is yes. Now, compare it to about, I want to go back, say about 23, 24 years ago? It's not as good. I remember sitting in this chair, you know, at that time, at the end of a fiscal year, saying, hey, we just earned $2 million worth of interest, okay, for that year. So, and, and we had a little bit less money, I'll be honest. So, compare relative in the last five years, yeah, this is, this is the best that we've had in five years. And that's just because the interest rates have risen just a little bit. If you notice, whenever the Fed raises the rates, then these rates go up just a little bit. If the Fed lowers the rates, and then, of course, you're going to have the reverse effect.
Well, good job.
Yeah, thanks.
Looking out for us.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other council comment? Any public comment? All right. Can I get a motion to accept the mo, accepted by motion, the Treasurer's Report submitted?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. City Manager's Office, Economic Development Agreement between the City of Galt and the Greater Sacramento Economic Council.
Good evening, again, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just briefly wanted to provide you with a quick overview on the partnership that we have with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. So, this item actually was originally approved, or this agreement, I should say, in 2015. The city had an agreement that was approved for $9,715, and that has been renewed each year. And so, for background purposes, this is a partnership with Greater Sacramento Economic Council. They're really focused on the, the region as a whole in economic development. They are an economic development organization created and led by local and regional CEOs in partnership with local governments. And so, the City of Galt is a partner, along with 20-plus other cities in the region. Greater Sacramento's purpose is to retain, attract, grow, and create sustainable businesses throughout the Sacramento region. We've worked closely with them since I've been here the last three years on the Economic Development Task Force. The Director's Task Force, we meet once a month and go over initiatives that are happening in the region and in the state, and things that we need to get involved in, with, as it relates to economic development. We, on the Economic Development Director's Task Force, act as an advisory committee to the President and CEO of Greater Sacramento. Over the past several years, Greater Sacramento has worked closely with us to assist within the community on business attraction efforts, as well as within the region. They actually provide us with requests for information on a lot of the prospects that are looking in California. They come through the state sometimes, sometimes they go directly to Greater Sacramento, and so it's a great resource for us to be able to sort of put our properties in the spotlight as it relates to some of the projects that are coming through the California pipeline. They really do act as a complement to our economic development staff. Obviously, we have a limited economic development staff, and so it's a great resource for me when I need data, when I need information on different projects, or follow-up on prospects that, you know, might be looking in the area. We've been able to collect job creation, workers' information on different jobs in the area, the business climate information that we're able to collect, they are a great resource for, for us, and have been over the last several years. We do see them as an important partner, especially now with the industrial projects coming online. So we have a large, really, you know, sizable piece of industrial property that we finally have the availability to market for some of the industrial users that are looking in this area. And so, this partnership with them will be important moving forward. As Chris mentioned earlier in the presentation on State of the City, is, the focus really is going to be on infrastructure and how we provide that to that area. And so we are able to lean on them as a resource, moving that project forward. The city's partnership with Greater Sacramento remains at 41 cents per capita, which is what it was in 2015. The upcoming rate for this fiscal year is $10,407, and that is already budgeted. There's no additional appropriation needed. But we did want to provide the opportunity for Danielle Casey with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council to speak briefly on the Greater Sacramento Organization and what they've been doing in the past year, and kind of what's coming up in the future, and also the services they've been providing to the community of Galt. So with that, Danielle?
Perfect timing. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and city staff team. So, a, a brief, just a tiny bit about myself. I, I am recovering, or maybe always public servant, so I do come from local municipal government. So it's really kind of nice to be at a city council meeting, even though not every meeting you have great things to talk about. I, I kind of like following really nice award ceremonies and other things, but, but, but it's wonderful to be here. I did come, my, my first public sector position was a very small community that went from 5,000 to 50,000 people over eight years, so a lot of crazy growth, and then in Scottsdale, Arizona, so. But I was a military kid. I've been all over throughout my life, and I, I'm extremely thrilled and honored to be here in Greater Sacramento. For those of you that know Barry Broome, you might be, hopefully you'll enjoy my presentation just as much or more. I'm not quite as animated as him. But, but, you know, I've, I've known him throughout my career. I've, I've had the pleasure of working with him on a regional basis, and he really told me about the amazing things happening with this region. And when I came and checked out the opportunities and really the amazing work to be done in all of Greater Sacramento, and that it was an opportunity to really make a difference in a larger community that truly cares and wants to drive its economy. It was very exciting. And, and I'm thrilled to see all the amazing work that your team is doing, again, with limited resources. So, I'll throw, I'll fly through this very quickly. Just want to make sure if anyone, our big audience, or anyone else that's maybe not familiar with the organization, just a, a very high-level overview, Greater Sacramento Economic Council is a public-private partnership. So, the nice thing, I think, for our public entities to know is, our board makeup is 30% now public, 70% private, but our funding is a little bit of a reverse on that. It's almost 80% private funding and 21% public, and we actually do sequester our public funds, so we know that we're using those appropriately. So I think that's a, that's important to know, and you're getting a lot of that benefit. We've got 44 CEOs in the region that are sitting on a board and acting in a way to advise us and also help drive forward initiative and change. But at that table as well, you know, we have our public sector leaders that are also making sure that what's, what's being driven is in the best interest of all the communities in the greater region. Some of the pieces of support that we have are, are things like our Competitiveness Council. This is a group of advisors and leaders that really looks at the data we bring forward, and everything we do is evidence-based. That's our focus. So we'll look at challenges and issues, and economic trends, and things that are going on across the country. We'll bring this to the Competitiveness Council, and they will help us drive forward those conversations to the Board of Directors. And there's actually going to be a board retreat, and Mayor, I'm not certain if you're going to be able to participate, I haven't checked the roster, but hopefully you are. It's going to be a very engaging discussion. And that board retreat each year drives forward our action plan for the year and all the work that we're going to be doing. But, but the advisory on that starts with our Competitiveness Council. We also have industry councils. So right now, our most active industry councils are Food and Ag Industry Council, focusing on food and ag, but really also taking a deep look now at ag tech and, and working to advance that industry. But we also have some other ones upcoming, possibly in the next year. We have a champions program. We go out and we talk to people in the community about why they should want to champion not only our organization for our selfish interests, but economic development in general, and understanding how economic development organizations work and engage. And, and we offer them opportunities as well to engage with the leadership in our group. And as Amy mentioned, the Economic Development Director's Task Force, which I personally hold near and dear because I served on her side of the fence in the past with the regional organization, I think it's, it's critical and, and very important for us to hear what's going on from our community standpoint. But it's also equally important that you have staff, economic development directors, there around the table, all hearing the same information, all having the same opportunity to participate in our regional efforts. So our internet, our internal organizational pillars, so just kind of, you know how we're staffed and what we're doing. We have engagement staff, and these are people that are really supporting our boards and councils and task forces. And of course, we obviously, you know, because we're a P3, we have an investment model, so we need to make sure to raise funds. We actually do quite a bit on sponsorships as well for events and programs. But we also have a research arm, and as Amy mentioned, I'll get to, at the very end, when you add up the staffing and also the data resources that we have, we're about $150,000 or more worth of value for you to tap into at any point, that, that, that's what that would cost you to have that at your, at your own disposal. So we really want the communities to, to tap into that. We've got some really geeky, brilliant team members that love a really good query, so they really enjoy that. Myself as well. We obviously do a lot of marketing and PR. So I do tell folks, if you're not seeing our PR, you should be seeing it in a local community celebrating the work we're doing. But we also do quite a bit of targeted marketing that you won't see, like to national site selectors, and reaching out and putting material in front of corporate real estate decision-makers and, and other business leaders in other markets. So, the work we're doing from that standpoint is pretty extensive. And then again, business development, our lead generation handling. Not only do we respond to inquiries that come in through the state of California, that are sent to us from GoBiz, and then we're putting together proposals and responses through them, we get them directly from clients, and then we're also going out and we're hitting the streets and doing our own lead generation. So we're sending Barry down to the Bay Area monthly, sometimes more frequently. We actually have a staff member that lives in Mountain View because it's very low-hanging fruit for us in terms of value proposition. We are the California option in this region. If you have a value proposition in a region and a need to be in California, we believe that there's absolutely no better place than Greater Sacramento. Everybody just doesn't necessarily know that yet, so that's part of the work that we're doing, is educating people on that. And I was actually, I do have to toot our horn just a little bit. I was, I was very excited to hear, we had a GoBiz presentation where some of the staff from GoBiz came and presented our, at our Economic Development Director's Task Force meeting last month. And they did say that the responses that we compile on behalf of the region in terms of look and feel and comprehensive data are second in the state of California, maybe to what LA County is doing. And I feel like they have a bigger budget. So, anyway, we're really proud of that, and that's thanks to the work that all of our communities do to help get great information to us that we can compile and put forward, but also make it, the work that we've done to make a great value proposition. So very quickly on some of these items, you know, I, I'd be negligent if I didn't kind of share, share Barry's vision and value proposition on the region and the community, and how all of these things work together. You know, the community is an entire market. Our goal and, and the work that we're doing together is eliminating barriers to entry. So obviously, you've got some that you have to tackle here that are going on right now, but that's, that's generally happened, there's always some type of barrier or challenge in a community. Access to assets, all of the communities help and work together on that, and that's a big piece of why we want to leverage our partnerships with all these 44 CEOs and create more seamless processes across the region, and, and also work on market brand development. And we believe and are also working towards ever, an ever-improving high-quality delivery system. And so what does that mean, right? The state of California is going to be putting forth a brand, although we're hoping that we can in some, in some way, shape, and form affect that. We held a recent site selectors forum where we do have some challenges there, but also some ideas and recommendations in terms of perceptions on, on California as a place to do business. But, but the state of California does have a big hand in that, and also in, in some positive lights in the promotion they do. But they have capability and capacity. There's quite a bit of funding for different things in the state of California, if you know where to look. It's also driving different decisions on things that are going to affect industry, like advanced mobility, for, for example, and anything that has to do with climate change, right? So, our, our region, we coordinate among industries and communities, and also ecosystems, and then the local communities are really a catchment for the regional industry spinoff. So again, as we have the state driving, pushing bid drivers, like things like sales, tax, regulatory policy, higher education, and other K-12 work, we really have a unique role in this region, representing, you know, about 142 billion in GDP, 1.2 million jobs regionally. And we're really managing economic data and evidence in this region. So when we go down and, and we're speaking to tenant representatives in the Bay Area, or maybe other folks that are decision-makers in Seattle, or, or we're at South by Southwest in Austin talking about the region, we are, we are using, we are using data-driven evidence to talk about the fact that, you know, out of the Bay Area outmigration, more people are coming to Greater Sacramento than Denver, Seattle, and I believe Austin combined. Those are very, very compelling facts, and just one example as to how we're trying to, trying to really push the perception of this region as a destination. We do deliver a site selection strategy, which I talked about, and coordinate the communities. And again, our economies are regional. I thought it was, you know, when you, when you think about where people are buying and shopping, when I look at Amy's leakage reports in retail, and I, I spent a lot of time in a local community doing quite a bit of business retention, which is a lot of work, but really valuable and meaningful work, especially on the small business side. So I commend you for that, as well as chasing retail. You know, your residents, you know, a, a good chunk of your residents actually work and live in the community, but about 19% actually also live in the Greater Sacramento area outside your community. And then a big chunk also live outside of the region altogether. So, you know, how are you capturing those dollars? And it's funny, when we look at all the different cities and the counties in the region, you know, nobody is supplying their entire, you know, their workforce is not fully captured in their community, their spending is not fully captured in their community. So, you know, you certainly, no community in a, in a region like ours can put up a fence and, and hope to operate its economy on its own. In terms of shared impact of job growth, now, I, I know from a financial standpoint, you all understand these are economic models, so we didn't go out and literally knock on someone's door and ask them about a job that we created, but we run our economic models, and we look at the companies we've worked with. models, and we look at the companies we've worked with, and those models are built with general assumptions as to economic impact in the region. If somebody really is trying to get to sleep at night, I can walk you through it and explain it, but we do have a third-party economist that's way smarter than I am, that checks these models and builds them for us. But, you know, essentially, it creates the equivalent, the job attraction and the companies that we've worked with just year-to-date since July 1, have created the equivalent of 16 jobs to the GALT community, 78,497 in tax revenue, and then 2.2 million in economic output. So, we're really proud of those numbers. So, again, even the work that we do, if we're not landing a company directly in your community, because of the way that populations, you know, flow to work and to home, we do have an impact on every community in this region. And, you know, it's 1.1 billion in total economic output to the overall region. And in terms of direct return on investment, based on the numbers that Amy gave you, that's about eight to one on your direct return on investment. And the economic output return is nice, but I know when I was in a local community, I'm like, give me my direct return, right? So, I can tell my community members what we're really getting for the investment that we're putting in here. In terms of our current-year action plan, these are high-level pillars, but we're working on regional brand. We're working on business climate, and business climate, you know, can really be just about anything that you think about, but one of the things we're doing right now is commissioning a study, looking at, for example, impact fees across the entire region, because we continue to hear that that's a, you know, a big issue. And again, it changes in every community and different areas. I do work to explain this stuff to my boss because he doesn't come from local government. I said, no, you can't just tell them all to lower the rate. They're just not going to do that across the board. They can't. But we are looking at those things to try to better understand where are there areas that we could look at legislatively, long-term, as we're developing and conducting impact fee studies going forward in the future, and understanding that, you know, doing things now that can help a company build up, especially when you look at your industrial park, if you can, you know, work with a company now that you know is going to have economic spinoff and impact in the community, how can you possibly offset that on the front end, knowing that you're going to get a tenfold return, for example? So, that's just, again, one example. And I think another higher-level example, even on a state level, that I think is important for you all to be aware of is AB 906, if anybody is following that at all. Last year, AB 2596, and we participated and supported this, and have reached out to partners and encouraging everyone to also support these bills. But essentially, 2596 last year was a bill that was unanimously approved through the legislature, did make it to the governor's desk and was vetoed, but it was a bill that asked for our state economic development agency to be accountable, have an economic action plan, have an economic development plan, and then also have to report on that. So, we've essentially dusted that off, and Cooley and many others have sponsored that again. And so, right now, it's also going through the process. So, we really do believe that the state of California should invest in its economic development agency statewide, and then be accountable to that and actually drive the economy forward, considering that when we look at economic development spending in other states, you know, I think Texas is about $10 per capita, and we're about 50 cents or something like that roughly. So, we're pulling some of those numbers at a deeper level right now. But again, infrastructure, workforce development, and then advanced industry clusters are also things that we're working on. I won't get too boring into that. But these are a few examples on target industries that we're working on right now. We like to kind of skate. I know nothing about hockey. I just think this sounds cool, that we skate to where the puck is going as opposed to where it is, right? So, I guess you could do that with any sports reference, right? But the idea is, when we look at economies and industry, we do believe that food and agriculture is obviously a steadfast, you know, cornerstone for our region, but we also want to start thinking about things like ag tech, and what does that mean in terms of, you know, 5G and broadband and other services that are really going to allow us to apply technology in a way that's never been seen before in food and ag. For health and life sciences, we've been very involved in making sure that the Aggie Square concept, that while it is central in the city of Sacramento, the spinoff opportunities and the draw that that's going to bring to the region could be extremely significant. So, we took a delegation, for example, to Research Triangle Park. If anyone's ever heard of that, it's a very impactful development project that took about 50 to 60 years to put together, but really made Raleigh-Durham, North Carolina, and made it a huge magnet for industry. So, we took a look to go see, how did they actually do that, and how did they build that public-private partnership? And now, how are things changing? Because it was this big rolling hills, Bear Crop Science, for example, had a huge footprint there. And then future automotive. And we're not talking about necessarily at all that there could be a component for things like autonomous vehicles. What we're talking about is who's building the battery technology of the future for new vehicles? Who's actually building the new transmission systems and the new vehicles? And how are we working with our local universities to figure out, are we training our engineering students the right way for the jobs of the future? So, it's pretty exciting and cool stuff that I'm still grasping every day. But ultimately, again, delivering our return on investment, these are the numbers from our economic impact analyses that talk about our achievements organization-wide. And you also have some shiny ROI reports that I gave to Amy to hand out for you. You can claw through. But this talks about our locates, our payroll generated, and then these are gauged across our goals that our board sets for us in our annual retreat, which everyone's involved in. So, you know, we've had a number of other really great successes that we're excited about, but we're really excited about the jobs numbers, the payroll, and then the locates. I wanted to touch on a couple other things that I do think are just kind of cool in terms of services for local communities. We're rolling out right now, we've been working on it for several months, a new website for greater Sacramento. When I came in in August, I said, well, that's a really shiny, pretty website, but it doesn't speak to me if I'm a business. It speaks to me if I'm an investor. So, we're completely revamping that. And we're also featuring enhanced community information pages. They were really static and boring before. And now, each community is going to have a much more robust page with more interaction, and it's really going to showcase the region as opposed to a list of communities. That means nothing to somebody who doesn't know greater Sacramento. You know, when we talk to national site selectors and they think we're next to LA, you know, what does just a list of communities mean? They really need to see, you know, and have a really nice picture of the entire region painted and understand what it means to be in this region. We're also doing things like designing really beautiful, consistent layout flyers for all of our communities, and really taking the responses that we do, and we call these RFIs, request for information. That's what we'll get from a company. And we put together pretty robust proposals, and we want all of our communities, no matter how big or small, to look just as sophisticated and having just as nice material as the next. So, we're working on that. And then we also have done a couple other pretty cool things as well. We have an online commercial sites database. We're building out the data sets in these. The nice thing about this database is it connects directly with commercial real estate brokers, so it doesn't cost them anything to list in here. But any of our communities, if you have any shape files or data layers, anything from your local bike paths to where your, you know, schools are featured or your recreation. By the way, when I was driving in tonight, it was very, I didn't realize it was summer yet. Everybody's swimming. It was really neat seeing all the recreational activity going on. But this database has tremendously robust data. Not getting into it now, but we've done some webinars. You can actually pick a spot in the map and drill down pretty extensively into demographics, business information, et cetera. It's actually an exceptionally good small business planning tool that your small businesses can use to figure out who their competition is, who's nearby, maybe what's lacking in the local area. So, we've just rolled this out in the last few months. We also, for the first time, hosted a Cornet Global Group in greater Sacramento with more than 200 attendees. It may not seem that cool to get the Northern Chapter, and Cornet Global is a commercial real estate group, big membership organization, and they always do their Northern California Chapter meetings in San Francisco. So, after a couple of years of begging and pleading, and then, you know, raising some money and getting some sponsorships, we got them to come up and do a Kings game with us. We had about 100 folks come up from the Bay Area to do this event, and they had such a great time. They've committed to doing two events with us a year. So, we would highly encourage you and, you know, members of your business community as we roll these out and continue to do these programs. It's a wonderful opportunity to engage with people that are representing clients from the retail side on to the industrial and office space. And then we also did our first-ever National Site Selection Survey and Familiarization Tour. So, I don't know if anyone was at our fam tour at our competitiveness forum. Don't worry, it's on videotape. That's exciting, too. You can watch that whole thing. But it was about an hour and a half, but, you know, what we had were, and again, it was really exciting, six national site selectors from across the country, and there's only about 150 of them really nationally, that do this 100% of the time. And their entire jobs are to help clients cite locations. So, they're working for large companies or other decision-makers on expanding their companies or locating them in new regions. So, they're analyzing everything, from your labor force to your buildings and property, to your tax base, to your incentives, everything. And it really is a relationship-based group. And what we found, I mean, conducting a survey of all these folks, was that they were largely unaware of the region. When we got them out here and took them on a tour and showed them our community, they were really blown away and impressed, but they also, again, gave us advice on some of our obstacles. One of the things was the ABCs of California for site selectors. If anybody guesses, I don't know, Amy might. It was anything, anywhere but California is where they're advising their clients to go in terms of expansion and location. So, again, we have a lot of work to do to get past that. But I will tell you, after seeing this region and really looking at our labor force and our higher-ed institutions and our communities and the resources that we have, they're very excited, and we got two leads out of that already. So, that's going to be a lot of fun, and we're going to be doing that twice a year and really doubling down and focusing on getting in front of these people that really had no idea that our organization existed or that our region wanted to be a player. So, a little bit more on the tour. And again, if you want, we can send you a link. You can watch the video or even some of the highlights. But to get six of them to come out was a big deal. When I was in the Phoenix region, and, you know, what is that about? You know, four million folks, we were, you know, generally would get six or eight to come out. So, it was really pretty impressive. So, and then we also got a really nice compliment from Andy Shapiro, and he works out of Mountain View and has extended us the ability to use his conference room whenever we want more and more down there. So, we'll take that. We'll take whatever we can for free. And then finally, just a quick summary, when I mentioned the research and data services that we offer the communities, and definitely, please take advantage of this, economic impact analysis. If you have a business or a project that you're either trying to lure or understand what the impact's going to be to the community, we can run those models for you to give you a sense of what the potential is. If you're thinking about putting something somewhere, we can help you with those. We can do labor and cost of living analysis. We have access to some really robust databases that are pretty expensive. For us, there's economy of scale with the region. For you, all these would be $20,000 databases. We do property and commercial real estate trend monitoring. We can analyze companies and vet them through some of the research tools that we have. And again, marketing and web presence and support, and a lot of other things in between, and all kinds of fun stuff. And if we haven't thought of it, and you need help on the economic development side, we're always willing to entertain how we can sort it out for you. So, with that, I know I probably went long, but I'm really excited about this stuff, and I thank you for your audience, and be happy to answer any questions I can.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your enthusiasm.
There you go.
I was thinking to myself, if we had somebody that was a really slow talker...
Right. It would've been a long night.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
I do, Danielle. I do have one question. Have you, and I'm new to the whole CACOG thing and participating in that. Have you guys interacted with CACOG?
I think Amy's smiling. Councilmember extensively. So, one of the things we're actually working on with CACOG, so I'd love to, I can send over through Amy, a copy of a Brookings report, which is actually a big basis of the work that we've been doing for the last year and a half, which was working with the Brookings Institution, with CACOG, with Valley Vision, and with the Chamber, really looking at the state of our economy and realizing some pretty shocking numbers about the region and our extreme dependence on government jobs as a large region. And so, that's really driving a lot of the work we're doing, trying to increase tradable sector jobs. And we're also working with all those same organizations on a regional prosperity strategy that's a result of that Brookings study. So, yes, we hang out with them regularly, and they're amazing partners.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Danielle. And just to mention, one of the things that I wanted to touch on was that we do, as a member of greater Sacramento, excuse me, have a seat on the Board of Directors. And so, typically, that would be the city manager. I've talked to Tom already about, the retreat I know was brought up just recently, he's got all kinds of invites coming his way, for the Board of Directors. So, we do have a seat on the Board of Directors. I think Paige, maybe, I'm not sure if you have attended in the past, but just as introduction, I think some of the council members maybe have gone through and sat during a board meeting. But they do a lot of work. I come from San Joaquin County, where the Economic Development Organization in San Joaquin County would do a site selection summit, and we'd have one site selector show up if we were lucky. And really, I mean, the amount of work that they put in at this organization is really mind-blowing. And so, it's a great partnership for us. We are able to feed off of them with information and assistance and, you know, gathering prospects and workforce data, and, you know, it runs the gamut. So, it is a great benefit for us. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer as it relates to our partnership with them.
Amy, the only question I had, and I think it's been answered, is, you know, this is an expenditure for the city. And, you know, I always try to look at bang for our buck. And with Danielle's presentation and the work that you've done over the last several months that we've talked about here, it looks like it's a great, great benefit for us and worth the money that we are spending. So, unless anybody else has anything to add, I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Do I need to read it? All right. Should I read it, or is that, can we make, is the motion made? Okay. Okay. Made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Campion. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Any communication?
None tonight.
Anything for the city clerk to report?
Yes, I would like to remind city council and let the community know there is a special city council meeting on Wednesday, May 15, at 4 o'clock, Budget Workshop.
Okay. All right, let's start with comments by staff. Mr. Selling, Director Selling, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. Basically, I wanted to do a public service announcement kind of reminder that we have the GALT Connect app, and that's something that constituents can use to report any kind of an issue, whether it's a sign is down, or a street light's out, or there's weeds in the sidewalks or something like that, or the medians, those kinds of things. So, feel free to use that app. The great thing about it is it's very efficient because it's designed to, based on the issue, it will go right to the staff that will work on that issue. And also, it gives you a report back when that issue's been addressed or when it's in progress. So, you get an update, and you don't have to wonder if it went to the right person or whatever happened with that. So, I just wanted to remind folks to try to use that GALT Connect app. It really is a great tool for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Arias?
Yeah, a couple of things. Planning Commission, this Thursday, we do have a presentation from the Air Quality District. They will be basically introducing themselves to the commission, kind of letting them know who they are and what they do, and then talking about the benefits of good air quality. And at that same meeting, we are providing an update on the Curly and Boulevard master plan. So, we've put notices out. There's been quite a bit of chatter on it. We've talked to a handful of people, so we expect it to be a robust meeting on Thursday.
Where's it going to be?
Right here.
Okay. Director Tyson?
Thank you. Hope everybody can attend the May 15 Budget Study Session. We're working very hard to prepare materials for you. See you there.
Thank you. Director Hall?
Evening. So, we're currently recruiting for the position of police officer, rec worker one market, lifeguard, youth sports official for softball. And of course, we're still taking applications for the city manager recruitment. Our staff is working hard on getting through the applications. So far, we've received 54. So, we will be bringing back more information regarding the city manager recruitment at the next council meeting on the 21st to discuss.
Great. Look forward to that. Thank you. Director Solis, you've been awfully quiet this evening.
I've been studying. We will be, starting tomorrow, we're kicking off a series of meetings for Prop 68. We'll be applying for a couple of grants, trying to figure out which parks are eligible. We have quite a few parks, so that's a part of it, is the acreage of it. We've identified two parks, Meadowview and Harvey Park, that we feel that we would be competitive in applying for grants. So, our first meeting, we have to have three to five meetings to apply for this grant. And the first meeting to kick off will be tomorrow at our Parks and Rec Commission meeting. Then we'll be going out to the sites, Meadowview and Harvey, and talking to the residents near there. So...
Great. Thank you. Chief Sockman?
Just a couple of things. No public service announcements, though. Monday was the California Peace Officer Memorial Ceremony. There were eight officers inducted that lost their lives this year, 10 total. So, two of them were from previous years. So, and GALT was represented there at the ceremony. Another interesting thing is our K-9 teams. They took the top team in the San Joaquin County K-9 trial on this weekend. They took the top team for the Yuba K-9 trial. That's given to the two handlers. They're combined... scores, so collectively, they had the best score out of any of the teams that were there for the last two trials. So that's a huge success for us. And lastly, I want to tell the public once again that our motor officers are out there in full force, isn't that right, Officer Steele? So those complaints that are coming in are being addressed, and there are an awful lot of, there are an awful lot of drivers out there that haven't figured out what a stop sign is and/or what the speed limit is, and so just I want to encourage everybody that's listening, that watches this later, please slow down, stop at all the stop signs. Would certainly make life a lot better and the quality of life for everybody in GALT. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hackman?
Very quickly, I want to thank our Public Works Director, Mike Selling, and the members of the Public Works staff for putting on a fantastic employee picnic on Friday. A lot of good comments about that and the organization. You and your department did a fantastic job, so thank you for that. Thank you for the council members who were able to come out. That was, it was a nice addition to the event itself, and I think that the employees had a good time. Thank you.
Ms. Hood?
I will be attending the League of California Cities City Attorney Conference this week. I will be reporting back on what I learn the next meeting.
Great, all right. Councilmember Campion, anything?
Nothing more.
All right. Councilmember Lozano?
I think everything was covered, with the exception of the food truck event on Saturday was, it didn't seem to be as well-attended, so whatever you can do to pass on the information when those are happening, I know we do a good job on social media, but not everybody's on social media, so tell your neighbors, friends, everyone to be out there for the food truck events. They're fun and good quality food, so that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Just a few things. First, I want to thank Mr. Solis for his receptiveness and responsiveness to some of the citizens that complained about some rec issues with sports, whatever. I heard good feedback from them. They said he, you know, he got with them and, you know, met with them, and it was a good outcome. I heard positive things from them, so thank you for that. And I didn't get to go to the barbecue, unfortunately. I was supposed to go, I met with Tom, and then I had a work disaster come up I had to deal with, and by the time it was over, it was already too late, so I'm bummed I missed that.
You really missed out.
Yeah, I know. Was supposed to go, I headed out of here on the way there and got detoured. So, but I wanted to thank you and you and actually both of you for taking care of, I've had kind of these little weed abatement, little emails have been shooting off, and we got bigger things to fry in the city, but those are little pet peeves of mine, but you guys have been super receptive and working together with who's responsible for what, so thank you for that. And then just, you know, just one last thought I had on some of the stuff earlier, you know, it's kind of depressing to think that, like, new council comes on, I think we've all worked really hard together to make big strides to make our community more business-friendly, and then we have, like, what seems like a huge setback with this waste thing, and it's a bummer to me. So I'm hoping we could do something, so that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandu?
No comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I enjoyed the City Employee Olympics. Ms. Hall was quite the athletic prowess out there, I was impressed. We, the high schools had every 15 minutes, which I sent you guys a link to the pictures since the council approved it last minute. It was a very, very good event, and it's kind of fun to see them get the jaws of life out and break things and get people out, so.